Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, roll call please, Carol.
Mayor Sheets.
President.
Greg Miller.
President.
Jim Skinner.
President.
Okay, I think we're gonna go ahead and start with the Fire Department before we do the minutes or anything. And we'll start with the new hires.
Good evening, everybody. We have a busy day today for Fire Department. We've got two new hires and three promotions. So first, I need to get the Board's approval on the new hires that we had selected. First one is Griffin Harris, and the second one is Wade Peters. Their effective start date would be January 6th of 2025. So I'd just like to get the Board's approval to hire them for the January 6th, 2025.
I'll make a motion that we approve the two new hires as presented, Griffin Harris and Wade Peters, for the Frankfurt Fire Department.
I'll second.
Perfect.
Roll call please, Carol.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, you got the approval.
Got those approvals. So just really quick, you know, with Griffin Harris and Wade Peters, you know, they went through the process. And the way we run our process, it's very strenuous process of evaluations of their skill levels, their knowledge levels, as well as their physical levels. Both of these two exceeded those levels. They were both ranked at the top of our list. And so, you know, kudos to them and, you know, for all their hard work. And we're excited to bring them on. So since we have so many here, we'll go ahead and do the swearing in.
Okay, let's start with Griffin. Please repeat after me. I, Griffin Harris.
Aye, Griffin Harris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Indiana.
Of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As firefighter.
As firefighter.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You can have whoever you want in there.
Yeah, give us a few minutes and then you get more pictures upstairs, so, yeah.
Get everybody in.
Okay. I, Wade Peters.
Aye, Wade.
Solemnly swear. That I will support.
That I will support.
The United States of America. That I will faithfully.
And I will.
Partially. Congratulations, welcome to the.
They're in alphabetical order.
Next with the chief and then one with the chief of my staff.
Oh, I'm so sorry, you want that?
Do you want to, do you wanna hold this or you just wanna? There you go. Say that, thank you. Are you ready? I say you wanna get one of the guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so, do you wanna? Yes, yes, let's go ahead and do that and then we'll do, yeah, they're gonna, they know to wait for you, right? How are you doing? Good, good. Then he's going to get the approval for their promotions and then I'll do all of those, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and pictures, of course.
Good deal. That's always the best thing. All right. I have three more things I'd like to go over today. And those, these are gonna be our new lieutenants that we're gonna be hiring in January. Just wanna kinda talk a little bit about each one of them, and then I'd like to get the Board's approval. Russell Sheets, he's been with us since 2017. He showed exemplary efforts at the Fire Department. He's taken on the opportunity to become the EMS Division Chief. He's worked really hard with the schools, with the hospitals, with EMS and with Frankfurt Fire. And, you know, we went through a very rigorous process again for lieutenant process. And all three of these were the top three that was in that lieutenant process. So we're very proud to have him on. Corbin Shire, he's gonna be the next one I'm gonna ask for approval for as well. He's been a firefighter since 2013. He's taken many initiatives in his life and his career to further his education with the fire service, to learn a little bit about, you know, what he needs to do as far as CPR. He became a CPR trainer. And again, very proud to have him on there. And last but not least, Bear, or Ennis, as most people call him, Bear at the Fire Department, Ennis Paserevic. He's been on the Fire Department now for, what is it, five years, I believe. And once again, you know, Ennis came to the Fire Department, and I remember Ennis coming to the Fire Department 'cause he was very green when he came to the Fire Department. But I can tell you, you talk about somebody who has taken a complete 180-degree and really has prospered through the Fire Department. You know, he's very intuitive on special operations, making sure to understand each part of that, going through and learning how to, you know, work as a truck company, starting to institute these new policies. So just to say, I'm very proud of all three of these. And all three of these firefighters are very deserving of this position. And I look forward to them being able to help move Frankfurt in another direction that we've never had before, at least since 1968, I can think of. So I'm looking forward to them working hard for us as a department and as for our city. So I'd like to get the Board's approval to promote Ennis Paserevic to a lieutenant, Corbin Shire to a lieutenant, and Russell Sheets to a lieutenant.
Chief, I'll make a motion that these fine young men get promoted to lieutenant. Great job on your behalf on going through the process. And I know for a fact you have three great firefighters here that's gonna do the city wonderful.
I'll agree with that. And the three picks that you've had, Matt, will be definitely plus for the Fire Department to move that forward, which we, which we're definitely looking for. And with the new station coming in, be a lot of guidance and leadership that they'll have. So I'll second that motion as presented.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Corbin, you wanna come out first?
Do solemnly swear. I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution. The United States of America. And the Constitution. State of Indiana. That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties. My office.
My office.
As lieutenant. According to law.
According to law.
The best of my ability. Congratulations. I will take some pictures. You will get this eventually, have to make copies of it, so. Okay. Congratulations. Rest of I D three to sign it. And then we'll get a picture right there.
Congratulations, I mean.
We're running all over the place, don't we?
We need to sign it.
Oh, yes.
He's in, she was.
Okay, I want to get a picture.
I'll try not to. After today, I'm really not, I'm really not.
It'll be a good day for that one.
Did she try this?
I believe so. All right, Ennis, come on up.
Okay, are you on the button?
Yes, I will.
Okay, there you go. I, Ennis Paserevic. I will support.
That I will support.
And I will faithfully. Help me God. Congratulations, everybody.
Congratulations.
Okay, if you would sign right there.
One, you're too quick, you gotta.
Oh, wait, she's gotta get a picture.
Yep, there we go. You were too quick.
Can't be that fast.
Oh, yeah, I'm over here.
Brody. Brody. Okay, good, how about you? Okay, got everybody? Okay.
Good to see you, young man. What happens, Indy?
Yes, for sure.
You cleared the room. No, these are the fun things.
They are.
The great things that happen.
Absolutely, yeah.
These are rewards for the rest of it.
Yeah.
We're done then?
Yeah. We're done. I have a motion for adjourned.
Okay, so we got him all taken care of.
We gotta go back and do the minutes.
Yeah, I wonder if. I think the rest of the department heads are out there, I'm not really sure.
I did see Scott and Jason.
Oh, you did? And I saw Joel, so. Hey, Jason.
Mr. Commissioner?
I don't think he heard you.
Good, you?
Come on up. It's really warm. What does this say over there by you?
Ninety-five.
Oh, I'm ready for me already?
Can you hit the button down?
We're always ready for it.
Go down.
I didn't hear you do anything else on there. Claims and mess.
Thank you.
She's, she's gotta do the minutes, but you'll be right there. Might as well be ready.
I think it's just hot for all the people.
Probably.
Probably just the excitement that stirs up is probably. No, you counted that one twice. They came in, they came back, yeah.
Hey, Dave. It sure is. Okay, I think we'll go ahead and approve the minutes from the November 25th, 2024 regular meeting.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented, November 25th, 2024, regular meeting.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, next we have the claims that need approved.
I'll make a motion that we accept the claims as presented this evening.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, did we have any public comments or, I saw Dave come in. Dave, were, did you sign up for public comments, Dave? Did you sign up for public comments? Oh, okay, he's with you. Okay, we'll get to you shortly. Okay, thank you. Okay, Police Department.
Told you.
Chief Shoemaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
Got a little book for you.
I already have one, yes.
Oh, thank you. Welcome.
As for your reading pleasure later, that, today we kicked off our accreditation assessment. The mayor was there for lunch with us and our, the assessors, one from Bloomington Police Department, another retired from Noblesville that are in scouring the building. They went through our policies the last four weeks, studying all our policy. Tomorrow, we have day two of our assessment, and hopefully we, I think we have a hearing in front of a commission in January. So I don't think we'll know anything necessarily tomorrow. But we'll have a hearing, some, I think ended, the fourth week of January, I think we have a hearing in front of the entire commission. And then we'll know about what we're doing. So that's what we're working on. We had the parade on Saturday, had some officers in for overtime, didn't have any issues there. We are, we'll have a graduation Friday night for Chastity Akerd and Xavier Vella from the Police Academy. They'll be back working the street then next week. And then we were notified that Colin Holsmeyer will not be able to go to the academy until May. So we're, we're gonna work on, on that, which is, is a new thing for us, not having access to that for him to start the January class. So we're, we're working on his training. And then we'll go from there with the Training Division to see if he can be released on his own for a short time. Sin of the year stuff, working with Carol, we got our claims in on Friday, making sure all of our, our line items have money in them to make, you know, to end the year at zero or more. Other than that, I think the job description for the maintenance is on the unfinished business for tonight, so we can talk about that then. But that's all I have, unless there are any questions.
Do you have anything for the chief?
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Street Department, Jason.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you, sir?
Good.
Just a few quick department updates. The grant was accepted by NDOT for South Mash Road to, for their review recently. We had submitted it last Thursday, and they accepted it for review today. So I just wanted to thank everyone in this room that put in a support letter for that particular grant. I really appreciate it. And we'll probably have an interview sometime in the next month, month and a half usually. And then after that, we'll wait, hear what, what, what we decide, but what they decide. But, but again, thank you for, for everything that you all gave me prior to last Thursday.
And thank you, Jason and Kimberly, for all the work you put into it.
Thanks.
I know it's not an easy.
Kimberly spent a lot of time at my, my office. It was a little warmer there, she said, so she came to my place instead of me coming up here. But she's been a big help for, for me and moving forward for the last probably month and a half. The three-hour parking signs, I ordered some for the downtown new parking lot. Those should be in, they'll match the, the black and white ones that are downtown. So as soon as we get those, we'll get those put up. If you guys want me to go ahead and put the old ones up, I can, for now. If not, then we can wait until the new ones get here. They'll, they usually don't take long. But I went ahead and ordered 10 of them, just in case we needed more. So as far as I knew, we only needed three. But I'm sure, assuming at some point in time, we'll, we'll need more, so.
It's on the agenda to be approved, isn't it? And then, is that amendment to an ordinance, is that correct? So it won't be, there's a chance it will not be passed tonight, correct?
Yes.
So we, I say just wait till we get the new ones, until we get the ordinance amended.
Leaf season is officially over. Like I said, we had a couple of machines out today. We will have, try to wrap up everything that's left. But Friday was the last day for, for everyone to get their leaves out to the, to the roadway. So we appreciate everyone doing that. And the guys are glad that, that's over for another year. So, but, and then just to update on the winter, we, all of our one tons are, that are supposed to have salt beds in them are all in. All the plows are attached or could be attached fairly quickly. So we're, we're moving our way through that. The new two-ton that was approved last year that we bought and received, the black one, is over getting lighting on it at moveover. And just so Carol knows, that's already been paid for. We don't have to go back and look for any more money. So, anyway, but that, that should be back hopefully in the next couple, three weeks, so we'll have it. So, but that's about all I have.
Anything for Jason?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next Building Services, Rob Boge.
Good evening. I would like to start. We have Todd Garber here from CNA Taylor. He is the general contractor for the iron block. And he is requesting permission to set an enclosed trailer on the north side of the iron block for a couple of weeks, looking at about 14 days, probably taking up two parking spots, possibly three at the most. This is for equipment that they're bringing in, equipment to put in the new elevator in the iron block. So that stuff is coming, but they can't store it outside. It's stuff that has to be in and out of the weather. So they're requesting permission to take up a couple of spots on that north side, parallel to East Washington's or to Washington Street.
Okay, would that be closer to the alley or closer to the intersection? Okay, the first two spots there.
I think the first one's a handicap, right? The west one on the back?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I had it backwards. So yeah, they're requesting at least two spots, possibly three, for about 14 days.
Is that alley still closed with the dumpster in the back?
Yes, sir, it is.
And that's still being used for... Is that a dumpster there now for...
There is.
That you're using for that?
Yes.
And that'll continue to be useful for you to have that closed also?
Yes.
So I'm asking approval for that tonight on his behalf.
Any problem with having that?
No.
Those two spaces, okay. Can I get a motion then for...
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve those spots being taken for 14 days, so they can make those necessary repairs and keep their equipment out of the elements.
Yep, I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, yeah, permission. And if you run into anything that that's gonna change or whatever, just let Rob know, and then Rob can let us know as well. Okay, thank you.
I requested this last time. We did this.
They have it in their packet, too.
All of them? You got them?
I'll tell you.
You didn't answer my phone today.
Did you call my desk phone? It doesn't work.
Thanks for letting everybody in the building know. I was jealous because Joel said you talked to him twice, and I called like four times, so...
He showed up. He showed up at my door.
Gotcha. Okay, well, this permit is being requested by Hoosier Heartland Dirt Works. They are asking that we waive the fees. This is to demolish the roundhouse as we know it on the rail yard. They are asking for a two-year permit that would take this out to December 3rd of 2026. Normal is six months. My suggestion is I'm asking for an extension to go to December 3rd of 2025, which is a year. That way, it will get us maybe an update sooner. I think if we go two years, we've got it in a place where a pass where we stopped getting updates on projects.
Right.
And I think this would maybe, you know, allow us to reevaluate in a year.
So do a year, then come back to it?
Then come back and reevaluate and extend it for another year. That's my suggestion. I mean, I've not been here that long.
It's gonna take two years.
That's my understanding. Could you say more to that, Dave?
Can I speak to that issue?
Yes, yes.
We have... I can give you that shows the area that is going to be worked on. And I gave everybody a copy here. What I have encircled...
Thank you.
Is... But the area is... And except for the building that's outlined, so you can see that.
Yep, this area and this area.
Those two areas will not be... This is, you know, this is the turntable. This is the machine shop.
Okay.
The rest of this area will be cleared up. Most of it's fallen down. I've got pictures. You can see some of the pictures here that we can pass those around of some of the things. Well, applications, so we're just trying to clean it up. I need to go and share it and help you set up. It was a $250,000 grant, I think.
I think, yeah.
So where is this in accordance to... Is that part of it you're gonna try to save?
That was what I was... Yes, that's saving. You can see that in the background. You can see... We're saving some of it, but you can just see some of it that's torn down there. It's all the wood. The roundhouse has fallen down. It took us 10 years to get a deed and another five years to get the comfort letter, and by that time, it was damaged.
Clarence, is this part of the...
I think it's part of the ready grant.
Ready grant, mm-hmm. It's a... Yeah, it's matching, so are you using like in kind or something, or...
Sharon, 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 I've got that.
Okay. I mean, I wanna make sure that we, you know, have the funding once it...
Right, and you have to match that.
And I didn't know who was matching that. I know the city's not, so... Yeah, nobody's asked. You either have to come up, I think, with a cash or an in kind. And I don't think you guys are doing the match, are you, the... True.
Depends when it ranges somewhere through the Chamber of Commerce or somewhere from his sources. So we got Mr. Bill Ossler out there who's doing the work. And we've gone through there. Chelsea Croft represents him.
Yes.
And Chelsea and I have been... We've got contracts inside and everything in place. And he just wants to break this fee so he can get started. It's gonna take him a while, but he thinks he can even work through the weather.
Oh, okay. So...
That's my request is for the board to waive the fees and just to do a one-year permit.
Yeah, I don't want to do it, too.
Yeah, do the year and then reevaluate when that comes back to see, because depending on the weather, that's gonna be a pretty substantial area for all of that to get cleaned up, so...
So once we give them permission to do this, do we have any say on what type of progress is made or no?
No, I mean, they'll have to meet expecting, you know, requirements and with the building permit and all of that. They'll have to meet all of those. But we can't really dictate through the permit process unless we got a special agreement with them to dictate what progress was made at what points.
Well, my suggestion is, and this is, again, being new to the position, my thought process is, is doing the one year gives them an opportunity to get started, gives us an opportunity to keep an eye on it, and if things are not progressing like we feel like they should, if they come back and ask for the second year, we charge them the permit fee. We start... I mean, we're allowed to do that, so there are things we can do. Not necessarily that that amount of money's gonna speed the project up a lot, but it would help if they know there's going to be fees involved in the future.
Well, and I think also if they are making sufficient progress and the Board of Works is pleased with it, you know, you can waive the fee in the future, next year as well, but that just gives you an opportunity to review what has been done.
Exactly, I agree.
I would be more comfortable with one year. Yep.
Okay, Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve this permit and we waive the fees for the one year up to December 3rd of 2025.
And then we'll reevaluate at that time.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay. Hey, you're welcome.
Before we grab... Before I grab the permit report for the month of November, I would like to thank Mr. Garber for coming this way. He's been very kind. Just met him today over the phone. He said he was coming. He had to play havoc to get here on time. Thank goodness we had the delay a little bit, so it allowed him to get here through an accident. But I appreciate people that keep their word, and I'm only gonna say that because everybody here knows we've had issues recently with the county as far as their renovation. The Farmers Bank, the Farmers Bank moved a dumpster in on us today in front of the building and did not ask permission. They asked for forgiveness. And so just putting that out there, so another thing, they are asking permission to bring a crane in on Friday to do some HVAC work. And so that happened today. It's just gonna be like half a day project. So I don't know if that needs to be brought to consideration, or if we just say, yeah, but you've got Friday to do it.
I think we did that before, but we considered that, but they had a timeline of how long that was gonna be. So I think that would be appropriate for this one also, to have a specific timeline that they're gonna have that there so that we can dictate if it goes too far.
Doesn't happen to stay there for a while.
I like to play ball with people, but so far, we've not got a whole lot of cooperation, so that's my feeling on that. It's up to the Board of Works.
Yeah, I think that would be then in your court then for to get the information for how long they want that time period to be, that they'll have that crane there, so that...
My understanding is the equipment's supposed to be there Friday morning along with the crane. They're only gonna partially block part of the street, and then it'll be out.
So essentially...
It's the day.
Yeah, this coming Friday, so we wouldn't have a Board of Works meeting before that, so you all would need to make a decision tonight if you wanted to allow that.
I do know, Chief Shoemaker, the last time that they brought a crane in, didn't we have a few issues there for a short period of time? Do you think it's gonna be any problem as far as the traffic and stuff, because I'm sure it's gonna block part of the street? Did we just make it one way or something? Didn't we do something that...
Yeah, I mean, but if they wanna change the road, they need to hire a police officer. You know, we shouldn't be down there.
Mm-hmm.
Run the traffic for them. It should be at their...
Right, right. I just wanna make sure that you don't see any issues.
I don't recall any of my...
And I think that they should be aware of that, that they probably should have somebody there if we need... If they need traffic control.
I can address that for sure.
So will that be something that we would want Building Services to handle then to get that? So that we know the parameters for them to bring in, because that's gonna happen relatively quick, so...
Yeah, that's the thing, in a few days here, so... Yeah.
In front of the Farmers Bank. I think we did some traffic changes up there.
Didn't we? I thought we did, too, the last time they brought the crane in. But we need for them... That's what I was thinking. Didn't we make it one way or something?
I will do whatever's requested of me. I don't care.
I think I would talk to them to make sure that they're aware that they, you know, there may be some traffic control on their end to make sure that everything is done safely up there.
Yeah, if you get a time period set up, let me know. I'll be more than happy to go up there with you or to find out what their parameters are, so we can ask questions about that, so...
I can be on the phone first thing in the morning. I have the project manager's number, so I can get that information first thing tomorrow.
We've met them a couple of times since, or during the project, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, let me know. Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
Permit report for November really quickly. Total valuation for November was $2.7 million. Biggest part of that is we issued permits for five new homes in the Meadowbrook addition, four Majestic. We do have a couple more coming from another company that will probably be permitted here in December. So out of that total right there, 1.9 was the five new homes. $437,000 was roofs, which still seems to be a very hot item. We issued 37 permits this month, and then Big B was $242,000, their estimated value of permitting. And they are still... Big B's kinda running behind a little bit. I will be there tomorrow at 10 o'clock to do a rough in inspection, so they can start drywalling. And Popeyes basically has their ceiling in. They're moving along very nicely, still looking at the second week of January for opening. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Dawn is not gonna be here this evening for Board of Works, so... Okay, Parks Department, Joel Tatum. Thank you, Dave. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Just a quick department report. Our Christmas lights are going strong. We've had a good response from them. So far at the Santa House, we've taken in $8,803.77, and that's a little down from last year, but it's still pretty good.
Yeah.
So we can't complain. Prairie Creek Park, hopefully everyone's noticed the large Christmas tree. I don't know whether you've driven past and missed it, but hopefully you haven't. It is actually off right now because of the rain. It kicked the GFI off, and we can't get it to come back on. It just immediately trips it, so we gotta wait for it to dry out, which the rain does that to the Christmas lights at the park as well. So hopefully, it'll be lit back up here shortly, but it went off without a hitch as well. Tree lighting ceremony went really well. And as far as that goes, we're just planning things for next year and getting things going and ready for the winter and checking on animals, making sure they're all doing okay, and getting their winter homes set up.
Sounds good. Everybody have any questions for Joel?
All right.
Thank you for all your hard work, and I'd like your employees. No, we appreciate it as well.
I will do so. They put in a lot of time, so it's good to hear all the praises that we've been getting, so...
Yeah, a lot of good things being said.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Community Development, Kimberly.
I'll be brief. Just ending year-end in the office and then finishing up some last-minute grants. Like Jason said, we just finished Mash Road, and so that's pretty much what I've got on my agenda. Taking some vacation days, in case anybody wants to know, no. And then Muffins with the Mayor is tomorrow morning at 8:30, so encourage everyone to come out.
All right? Sounds good. Thank you, Kimberly. Okay, next we have the Attorney. There's a couple of things I'm gonna let you explain.
All righty. We had Jesse Casey come in and talk about the golf course agreement and wanting to extend that for an additional year. And then we also had, I think his name is Brent Waymire, and he is at Wesley Manor. And he reached out to me as well, wanting to extend the contracts for Wesley Manor as well. So I have before you three different contracts. One of them, I found a typo in the first page of the Frankfurt Golf Management Golf Course Operations Management Agreement. It should be 2024, so I will correct that date. But what that one did is we just extended it for one year, so it will start January 1st, 2025. It will go for an additional year. And then Jesse had a couple of other items that he wanted included in the contract, and those actually were already in there. So I did clarify some language to make it more in line with what he had specifically requested, but it was already in the contract. So really, the only change is that it's going to be for a one-year period, and it will end at the end of next year, that we will reevaluate in October of 2025 to determine whether or not we want to extend it. And there are two additional opportunities to extend, because originally in the contract, we had three opportunities for one-year extensions, and we're using one of those now. So that's that first one. The second one is the agreement between Wesley Manor. This one, we just updated so that it would be for the 2025 and 2026 golf seasons. They had indicated that they were willing to do a longer period of time if you all were willing to do that. So we did a two-year contract for that, and nothing else really changed other than the dates for that one. And then the same thing with the lease agreement. It is just for a two-year period as opposed to a one-year period. So that just extended for 2025 and 2026, and that was all that changed in that one.
They actually provide the city with funding every year to help take care of the golf course, which is... Which part of that is?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Frankfurt Golf Course Operations Management Agreement.
Agreement. Can I do, can I do all three of these?
Yes, as long as we list them all in the minutes, that's fine.
Okay, and also list, approve the agreement that we have with, between the City of Frankfurt and Wesley Manor, and the lease agreement that the City of Frankfurt has also with Wesley Manor for the year 25, 2025 to 2026.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay. And then, did you want me to talk about that resolution?
Yes, if you want to.
Sure. So for Keystone, we received their bid for the fuel, and so I prepared a very brief resolution just accepting that, that bid. There wasn't really any place to sign on the actual bid, so this just states that we are taking the fixed prices on that bid, and we're accepting it.
And Carol will assign it a resolution number.
That is correct.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution for Keystone on the fuel agreement on the fixed prices.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Do you have anything else?
Nope. Hope, I think everything else is in different spots, so.
Okay, okay. Under unfinished business, we have the job description for the part-time old-stony maintenance position, so I would like to get approval for that, so we can get it advertised and hopefully have it started real close to the beginning of the year. I don't know whether it'd be the 6th and not on a Monday, I think, or, that's kind of the goal, is we could go ahead and get that advertised.
I'll make a motion that we accept the position title or job description for part-time maintenance mechanic as presented tonight.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, we've approved that, and then we will get Cheryl to advertise that.
Get that posted.
Yep, on the website. Okay, the EAP contract with Suncrest, do we have that, or do you have it?
It was in that second round of documents.
The second. Yes, so we had already looked at this before, and I think we approved it, but I can't remember for sure, but we did pass it along to Suncrest, that's for the mental health services, and they did approve the contract as written, and they did sign it, so I have provided the signed copy. Carol, I don't, do you remember if we approved it before?
I feel like we did approve it before, but I would need to look at the minutes to be sure.
If we want to reapprove it, just to make sure we've got it approved, that would be great, because it is supposed to start in January.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the EAP contract presented by Suncrest Services for the City of Frankfurt.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, we have that taken care of, and the other one did get canceled, right?
Yes.
Yes.
At the end of the year, I think, okay. Okay. Next, we have new business, does anybody have anything under new business? I do, but if anybody else has, okay. So I was looking at the calendar before I came down here this afternoon, and December 23rd is when we should meet again. Do we want to continue to meet on the 23rd, or would you like to delay that? And I don't know which, I haven't even mentioned this to you either, on the 30th? The only reason why I was thinking is if there's any thing that we need to take care of, like encumbrances or anything, I think before, haven't we moved it, or maybe met two times at the end of the month?
Yeah, or it just depends, I think we've, last year, we had to end up meeting again since it fell earlier in the month, since we have a whole week of business left at that point. I would agree with you, I would prefer to see it on the 30th if that works with enough people's schedules to have a meeting.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
That work, okay.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and plan to have that on the 30th, and then let's send a notice out to the media and let them know of the change? Will that work for the department heads? Okay. I just thought it would make more sense to wait till about last week and catch everything at the end that we might have, so. Encumbrances would be the big thing, so. Okay, does anybody have anything else? Okay, don't forget, tomorrow, Muffins with the Mayor, 8:30 at Core. We'd be happy to see you there. It's our last one for the year. Okay, anything else?
Not for me.
Okay, I'll take the motion.
I'll make a motion, Richard.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Yeah, we need to talk to her, too, yeah.